Good morning trustees, before we begin I'm going to ask Hailema to pull it for us.
Aloha Nui Kaku'a Pa'ola, join with me in a word of prayer. Eho Malu Kaku. Ikeli Kamaku'alaniki iki loa okokeao huloko'a. Eho'i makou kaupoe poepua emohala nei. Ma ke ia halavai nei oka papa alaka'i ke kahuai vai na kahuai vai oke ke ana kuli ana Hawa'i. Ke kalakala'e nei makou ya oae. Iko'ala ka'i ana ya ya makou ikeia papa nei kalakou halavai na kuli ana lako'e au amo nei. No'opono ke koho ana i kalunaho'omalu oke ia papa'a. Ke'ku'a e koku'aku. Eho'opaa'ku'i na na'au? Maka no'ono'opono. Ahavi ka ikeka na'au au eho'opono kolaku kuleana. E koho'opono ike'alaka'i oke ia papa kahuai vai. No'alela ke'aku'a. Ma'alamaho'ia makou e maliumai ina noi ina kalokalo. Ake no'e kaniya'ao eke ia mau mana'o. Mao Yesu Kristalako Makoho'ola. Amen.
Thank you so much and we want to congratulate our newly elected trustee. Hi. And our hardworking re-elected trustees. Trustee Ahuna, trustee Alapa and trustee Akina. I would like to call today's Board of Trustees meeting to order. Let the record reflect it is Wednesday, December 4, 2024. And the time is 11:04. Board Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Ahuna.
Eo.
Trustee Akaka.
Eo.
Trustee Akina.
Aloha mai Kaku.
Trustee Alapa.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Trustee Galuteria.
Eo.
Trustee Kaheli. Trustee Souza.
Eo.
Trustee Wahee'e.
Present.
Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Eo.
You have nine trustees present, you have quorum.
Mahalo. Aloha Kaku and welcome to our Board of Trustees meeting. This meeting can be viewed and observed via livestream on OHA's website at Joining us today we have our CEO Kapuhana Stacy Ferrera and OHA staff present. Also present is Board Council Na'ivi Wordiman. Our first order of business is the organization of the Board of Trustees. Election of Board Chairperson and Vice Chairperson. Appointment and approval of Committee Chairpersons and Vice Chairpersons. Lehu'a, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have two people online, the first person is Jermaine Myers.
Aloha Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
Aloha Chair and trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers, I'm an OHA beneficiary for beneficiary advocacy and empowerment. I'm also a Nanakuli Hawaiian homestead let's see. Trustees, OHA Chair Hulu Lindsey is a pono leader and deserves your support to once again be the Board Chair of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs for the next two years. I humbly ask for your nomination and vote for trustee Hulu Lindsey to be the OHA Board Chair. Yesterday, I sent all of you an email which included the following. Highlights of Chair Hulu's major accomplishments as OHA's Board Chair for the past two years from 2022 to 2024 and the previous two years prior from 2020 to 2022. How through her steadfast commitment and working long hours under Chair Hulu's leadership since 2022, OHA now receives an additional $9.6 million annually from the pro-rata share revenue to serve OHA's beneficiaries, pay staff salaries and benefits, and pay for OHA's operational expenses. How Chair Hulu is the only trustee that consistently attended all 16 pro-rata working group meetings from September 2023 to November 2024. How Chair Hulu serves the Lahui not herself, no nepotism by Chair Hulu. Yet two OHA trustees ignored the nepotism law by deploying a strategy to keep their daughters in paid trustee staff positions. The trustee's daughter started working at OHA as their personal trustee aide, but after the nepotism law took effect in July 2023, they had their daughter work for another trustee so that they could still be employed by OHA and each paid a salary of $50,000 plus benefits. How Chair Hulu took a stance against casinos on OHA lands. How some OHA trustees met secretly with the Morongo ban of Mission Indians to listen to their casino proposal in secrecy and outside of an agendized joint committee meeting. And according to OHA's ex-Vice Chair at a BOT meeting I attended, two OHA trustees met with Governor Green privately to request his support of this casino proposal which would swap OHA's Kaka'akuma'ka'i lands for the state's Hawaii Convention Center. How the Taxation Foundation of Hawaii provided testimony to the legislature explaining how dangerous it would be if the state allows even just one Indian tribe to open and run a casino in Hawaii on OHA or DHHL lands. How once the legislature legalizes the Class III gaming casino to allow OHA to have the Morongo ban of Mission Indians manage a casino on OHA lands, any federally recognized Native American tribe can buy land in Hawaii, go to the Department of Interior to invoke the Fee-to-Trust process, and use the federal law, the Indian Gaming Regulatory Act IGRA that allows Indian tribes to conduct gaming operations in a state even if the state doesn't agree. I have witnessed Chair Hulu maintain decorum, order and diplomacy even while being attacked by other trustees and paid contractors with self-serving interests. Chair Hulu's actions are evidence that she keeps her focus on God's purpose for her anointed leadership. To serve Hawaiian beneficiaries not herself. Chair Hulu, Isaiah 54:17. "No weapon formed against you shall prosper, and every tongue which rises against you in judgment, you shall condemn. This is the heritage of the servants of the Lord, and their righteousness is from me," says the Lord. Ke'aku'a pu'. God bless all of you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Madam Chair, if I may say for the record, I believe that the testimony received from our beloved sister contained references to other trustees that are not in the agenda today. That's my personal opinion stated for the record. I would also like to make a motion at this time.
We're not ready for motions.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank the beneficiary for her kind remarks and apologize to my fellow trustees if you were offended in any way. And to state that I had nothing to do with her testimony. So before... Oh, okay.
So the next person is online, I don't have a name, but you can unmute yourself and you will be given five minutes to speak. The last digits of your phone number is 050, did you want to speak on this item?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Aloha everybody, this is Ke'eli I'makika'i calling you live from out there in the Lahui. I just wanted to wish you guys all the best and just remember your oath of office and do your very best solemn best to do your fiduciary duty and honor that which you are charged with, public service. Thank you and God bless you guys. Aloha.
Our next speaker is Senator Kurt Favella.
Aloha.
Aloha Senator.
Thank you guys for allowing me to speak, I never know the protocol so good things need to be signed on. I'm here today to advocate for my good brother Kai Kaheli. In 2018, I was blessed to go into the square building where even though I am a Republican Senator, he was one of the few senators besides my good friend Donovan Delacres, wrapped their arms around me and was willing to guide me not only on the issues that happened at the Capitol, but on Hawaiian issues when it comes to water and land, some of the stuff that we had passed so that there's no more landfills next to Hawaiian homes or any community that is affected by landfills. There's something that I noticed within him and I was sad that he left and he went to Congress. When he left the Senate, he knew I didn't want him to leave, but I knew he was going for bigger and better things. So whatever the outcome that had happened over the years, me and him, again, like I said, you know, everybody kind of wondered why us two hang out together. His one purpose is our people. I've never seen anybody besides myself have that passion and always open to invite. He invited the whole Senate to Monica'i. I was probably the only one that took the invitation to go with his family. I went there on the down low, I didn't want everybody to know, you know, like new media and whatever, yeah? But no matter how much we tried to keep it quiet, the news knew we was there. The news had quoted that I had endorsed and supported Kai Kaheli for Congress. At the time, the Republicans did not have a candidate, so I didn't break any rules. But when we talked about the support and the unified, unity of me and Kai up there, you got to understand, this is something I never was ever a part of. I feel that I was robbed from my language and my culture. I didn't know anything, I was very, very nervous because Kai could speak Hawaiian, chant Hawaiian, sing Hawaiian, do the whole on the leg real low to the ground. I get bad knees, no way I could do that. So I went up to Kai and I said, "Brother, I can't speak Hawaiian. How I gonna do the offering and all that?" Oh no, Italian there. So I didn't know, this is another thing that was so blessing to be up there. So the person that did all it for us was the mother and the grandmother is what received her gift. Didn't know that at the time, but when they did the opening for us, me and my wife and my daughter, again, we was trying to stay off camera, but of course, good enough. But the best part about up there raining, they couldn't see me and my family crying so much, being a part of something that was so unified, so important that he took the time to invite the whole Senate to experience something that is so moving. I truly believe in Kai going forward that he can take this, and everybody know how I feel about OHA, including my good friend over here. Never had any faith and nothing to do with any leadership, I'm not calling anybody out. I love every each and every one of you in the room. But I feel that the leadership that I see and the qualities that I see in Kai's movement, I think that we can go in the right direction. Like I was telling Stacy earlier, moving forward or any movement is a positive movement. Being stagnant is not good. But I really believe and truly believe if Kai has a chance to lead OHA or whatever the position, you know, it comes, I think he's gonna do a great job for our people. And like I said, I really... I don't know how to say it, the stuff that we did in water and land was very much monumental for everything that we had done going forward in a Senate. But I'll remember this and I will just end with this before I get more emotional, but this is how much love this brother had for me and we just met. We got, no we, I got tricked in public safety. No means yes and yes means no. When it came to my good brother who I love, Dr. Sisso, Nolan Spendo. So when I came to the meeting, they already had the discussion, no means yes and yes means no. So I was over there testifying because I love, you know, I wanted him to get another chance, you know, and then I voted yes. And then yes meant no. So when I got out of the room, Kai came running from his office. Stop, tell him get back to the good meeting, they tricked you. He was supposed to say no means yes and yes means no, whatever it was. So it was so confusing because I was new there, right? And you know, I don't play that kind of behind the scenes games. But I trust him enough that he had come for my defense to let the public know that I was tricked. And because of that, I want to share this guys going forward. All my colleagues wrapped their arms around me, knew that I was tricked and they gave Nolan Spendo. Well, not a try. So I leave you guys with that, thank you guys for letting me speak, take care, a blessing, aloha.
Okay. Before opening the meeting for nominations for the election of officers, I intend to follow the Roberts rules as consistent with the open meetings requirements under Sunshine Law. Once nominations are made and nominations are then closed, a roll call vote will be taken. If there is just one nomination for any particular office, a roll call vote will be taken and should that nominee receive a simple majority of all trustees to which the board is entitled, for example, votes, that nominee will be elected. Should there...
Yeah.
The successful candidate needs to have five votes. Should there be more than one nominated for any particular office, a roll call vote will be taken and when your name is called, you shall indicate which of the nominees you are voting for by announcing the name of the nominee for whom you are voting when your name is called in the roll call vote. We will continue the voting process until a nominee receives a simple majority or five votes of all trustees to which the board is entitled. So are there any questions? I don't want you folks to be confused. Any questions from the Board of Trustees? Yes. We have to say it out loud, it's the Sunshine Law requirement.
I have a question Chair.
Sure. Turn it on.
Sorry, I have a question maybe for council. Is there a provision in either our bylaws or administrative rules when electing leadership for the senior most member of the Board of Trustees to preside over that process?
There is nothing in the bylaws that specifically reflects that. And as I had indicated previously, the Chair is the appropriate person at this time to proceed with the meeting today.
Do I hear any objections to the process as stated? Yes. I know in the past then we did vote by secret ballot and I think that was not well advised to us by our then council. It's not... I'll let Board Council answer.
If I may, there had been an opinion issued by the Office of Information Practices earlier this year, 24-03 was the number for the OIP opinion and it clearly indicated in my opinion that you needed to have a record of each individual members' votes taken and that that can't be accomplished through a simple, a secret ballot process. So a roll call vote would be necessary to accomplish that.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing none, I will now open nominations for Board Chair.
Madam Chair.
Trustee?
Madam Chair and colleagues, I move for the nomination of Carmen Hulu Lindsey to be Chair of the Board of Trustees of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs.
Madam Chair. May I make a motion to nominate Kai Kaheli for Chair?
Any more nominations?
Just a question Madam Chair.
Yes.
Is there a requirement for a second to any nomination?
There's not a requirement for a second. It's voluntary after.
Are there any more nominations? Hearing none, nominations are not closed. At this time, before any discussion takes place, I would like to offer trustee Kaheli a few minutes for an opportunity to speak on what his vision is for OHA.
Mahalo Chair for the opportunity and mahalo to trustee Alapa for your nomination. I also would like to say mahalo to my friend Senator Favella for coming today. Your presence here at the Office of Hawaiian Affairs means something to all of us and speaking, I hope for the rest of the board, we hope to strengthen our relationships with the state legislature, especially with the upcoming 2025 session that we all will hopefully be there. You know, I'm honored to be nominated as Chair of OHA and it's with profound ha'ha' and humility that I accept the nomination to be Chair. You know, my leadership philosophy is to lead with humility, to lead with transparency, to lead through empowerment and to harness the collective efforts of all of us to move OHA and Hawaii forward. Most importantly is to lead with aloha. I think OHA's purpose is clear. Obviously, we have statutory requirements that are enshrined in the state's constitution, but at its core, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and all of us here, all of our hardworking staff, those listening throughout the Paya'aina, our job is to make life better for Hawaiians. That is our job. We do it through education, through economic resilience, through housing, through self-determination, through cultural revitalization. These are the things that we are tasked to do every single day. And I really believe through a collaborative leadership model that is inspiring and innovative that we can bring meaningful change to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And so my nomination to be Chair, I accept it humbly. I look forward to working with all of you and if given the unique opportunity to lead this board as a newly seated member of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs which will send a message to the entire state, I humbly accept it and I look forward to working with all of you. Mahalo Chair.
Thank you. And I will not go into my background because you all know me very well. And thank you trustee Akina for the nomination. I will then ask our secretary for the roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka. Lindsey. Trustee Akina.
Trustee Lindsey.
Trustee Alapa.
Trustee Kaheli.
Trustee Galuteria.
Trustee Kaheli.
Trustee Kaheli.
Trustee Kaheli.
Trustee Souza.
Trustee Kaheli.
Trustee Wahee'e.
Trustee Kaheli.
Chair Hulu Lindsey.
Seeing that trustee Kaheli has five votes, I vote for trustee Kaheli.
We also have, excuse me, but we still have... Trustee Ahuna. I'm gonna invite you to take the chair. Trustee, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I need a vote from you and trustee Ahuna is Kanalua so I will also be calling on him again. So trustee Ahuna.
Board Secretary.
Yes.
I would also like to change my vote to Kaheli as well.
Okay. And Chair... She said, oh, she did, okay. All right, I have, yes. Trustee Kaheli has more than five votes, so you are the new Board Chair. Mahalo.
Well, first and foremost, I'd like to just say mahalo noi loa to all of you. This is not the position that I thought I was going to be in when I joined the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, but I truly believe in collaborative leadership and I also believe that leaders lead. And I look forward to working with all of you. And I'm excited for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and I hope you are as well. I also want to say mahalo to Stacy and the entire administration that put your incredible time and effort into making Hawaii a better place for native Hawaiians. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you. I look forward to getting to know all of you and working together with Stacy and our team. At this time, I will now open nominations for Vice Chair of the Board.
Chair.
Trustee Galutaria.
Welcome to the Chair. I'd like to nominate trustee Souza.
Are there any further nominations? Hearing none, nominations, yes, trustee Akina.
Mister Chair, first, congratulations. And secondly, I nominate not by her request, but because of my recognition and many of our recognition of her experience, Carmen Hululunzi, trustee Lindsay.
Trustee Lindsay, any nominations? Hearing none, nominations are now closed.
I will do a roll call, trustee Ahuna. Or please state the name of the person you would like to vote for. Trustee Souza or trustee Lindsay?
Hululun.
Trustee Akaka, Lindsay. Trustee Akina.
Trustee Lindsay.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Kaheli.
Trustee Souza.
Thank you. Trustee Souza.
Trustee Souza.
Trustee Wahee. And trustee Lindsay.
Trustee Lindsay.
Four for trustee Lindsay and five for trustee Souza. Trustee Souza is our Vice Chair.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Souza. I gotta get used to this button. I would like to now move to the appointments of committee chairs and vice chairs. For the Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment, I would like to appoint trustee Galutaria as Chairperson and trustee Akaka as Vice Chair to the Committee on Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. Do trustee Galutaria and trustee Akaka accept the Chair and Vice Chair for the Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment Committee?
Next up.
Aye.
I would ask the Board to ratify the appointments with a roll call vote.
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka. Aye. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Yes. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahee. And Chair Kai Kaheli.
Aye.
We have nine yes votes.
For the Committee on Budget and Finance, I would like to appoint trustee Luana Alapa as Chairperson and trustee Dan Ahuna as Vice Chair to the Committee on Budget and Finance. Trustees Alapa and Ahuna, do you accept the Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee on Budget and Finance?
Aye.
I would like to recuse myself. I spent a lot of time on these commissions that I think a lot of other trustees should be working on these committees, so thank you for the nomination.
At this time, I accept trustee Alapa's acceptance of the Chair of the Committee and also trustee Ahuna's recusal. At this time, I would like to leave the position of Vice Chair open and we'll come back to it at a later date. I would ask the Board to ratify the appointment of trustee Luana Alapa to the Chairperson of Budget and Finance.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka, aye. Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria. Trustee Lindsay, aye. Trustee Souza. Trustee Wahee. And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
For the Committee on Investment and Land Management, I would like to appoint Keone Souza as Chairperson and John D. Wahee the fourth as Vice Chair to the Committee on Investment and Land Management. Trustee Souza and trustee Wahee, do you accept the Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee on Investment and Land Management?
I do.
I accept the nomination mahalo. I would ask the Board to ratify the appointments.
Trustee Ahuna. Trustee Akaka. Trustee Akina. Trustee Alapa. Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay, aye. Trustee Souza.
Aye.
Trustee Wahee.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli.
Aye.
You have nine yes votes.
Unless there's a need for us to go into executive session, I will be canceling item three A. We're now on item. Oh, okay. We're now on item four, which is Community Concerns on the agenda. For Community Concerns or Celebrations, do we have anyone signed up to speak on this item?
Yes, we do have one person here. We have Renette.
Hi, aloha, good morning.
Aloha.
Thank you. My name is Renette Kaahenui Sugunu Macarrollson. And the last time I was here was in twenty twelve because I worked for Governor Wahee and the Native Hawaiian Royal Commission. And I'm here today because it's so important to me. The last three months I have worked tirelessly on the efforts of electing Kamala Harris. And I'm here today because my concern is Hawaiian sovereignty. This is the time, gang. You know, when I was here in twenty twelve and now I'm seventy-two, I stand ready, Board Members, to assist you in any way. We should be very concerned on what's happening in the continent, but I'm more concerned about our people. So I just want to put this message in your head that Hawaiian sovereignty is needed more than ever. It doesn't matter what the leadership is up there, it's what our leadership is here. And to keep our people thriving and pono. And I'm happy to see the faces around this table, some of the faces I've seen before, as I said in twenty twelve. And I want to personally thank Governor Wahee for putting together the Native Hawaiian Royal Commission and all the different organizations, Kamehameha Schools, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands, but most especially Oha. Because we need you guys, okay? Now is the time. We're running out of time. I promised my uncle twelve years ago when we did the sign up. He told me niece, is it gonna happen? Heki noa, it's gonna happen. And he's from, he was from Kio Kaha, your island Kai. And it didn't happen and he's gone. And my parents are gone. But I'm still here and I need your help, every single one of you and your ohana. And the non-Hawaiians, everything. We need, we need everybody, yeah? So let's hola muah. And I also want to thank Chair Lindsay for her help previously with the Native Hawaiian Royal Commission. Mahalo. And I look forward to your leadership, Chair Kaheli. Let's go, brother. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, we have one more person, I think, online. Jermaine, did you want to speak under Community Concerns? Your hand was up.
Yes, I do. Mahalo. Aloha Chair Kaheli, Vice Chair Souza and trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers and I am an Oha Beneficiary for Beneficiary Advocacy and Empowerment. I'm also a nanakuli Hawaiian homestead, Lassie. Congratulations to the members of the new leadership. I look forward to seeing the many good works that the new board is planning for us, the lahui. I also look forward to seeing that we will have pono leadership and not pono ole leadership. That has been always very important. Very important to the lahui. As many have spoken about before, Oha has had a history of the poorest record of serving the community. And I'm just looking forward to seeing that those that are taking the leadership role of Chairs of Boards and Chairs of the Committees will be doing good things for us. Align with Ethics Commission, align with Procurement Code, align with the strategic plan of Oha. As I have heard, it is Oha's staff that does all the work. But it does take leadership and pono leadership to guide Oha. And I knew of pono leadership with the past leadership. I don't know the new leadership. I don't know how the new leaders will lead. I only know your historical political records. I know your historical records at Oha, but I don't know what you're going to do for us in the future. I don't know what kind of leader you plan to be. If you are going to put self-interest before the lahui. If you are going to garner relationships to form huis over the lahui. I'm gonna look and see if you are gonna put people over profit. I will always be an advocate for beneficiaries empowerment. I will always be an advocate for pono leadership and pono actions. I will never co-sign and look the other way when I see that pono ole is taking precedence over our principles and what we say is our culture. I look to God to see how he will guide this board and how he would guide this office. And if indeed the beneficiaries and the lahui will benefit. And if not, he will replace you. Kailkuapu, God bless all of you.
Mahalo Jermaine. Do we have anyone else?
No, there is no one else.
And mahalo noi loa, everyone, please be on the lookout at the end of the month for the new twenty twenty-five Board and Committee Schedule. Before we adjourn, I want to say two things. First of all, just looking out at the faces here and everyone gathered, I want to acknowledge Kudani Akaka, who's in the room. You know, I had a opportunity to visit him after a really bad health scare that happened in Kona. And I was there with Kale and with your mom. It is a blessing that you are here with us today. We are so honored by your presence. Mahalo Kailkuapu for the opportunity for you to be with us today. I look forward to your wisdom and to learn from you and to help this board move in the right direction, so mahalo. It was an honor to represent and follow in the footsteps of your daddy in Washington DC. And thank you for blessing me with his bai bala that I was honored to take the oath of office a few years ago in Congress. Mahalo. Finally, I would like to just take this opportunity to recognize and mahalo Chair Lindsay for your service to our board as its Chair. I didn't have the honor to serve under you and under your leadership. It is not easy and I'm sure this role and this seat I sit in right now is not going to be easy. And you did it to the best of your ability. You did it with grace. And I just wanted to say mahalo noi loa and I hope all of us feel that way as well. I'll never forget this moment that we spent together in Washington DC on the hundredth anniversary of the signing of the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. And Stacy, you were there as well in a different capacity. And when we went outside to have our press conference and other members of Oha were there and the societies and many others who had flown up. And all of a sudden, this dark rain cloud formed over the United States Capitol and drenched all of us. It was a like, I can't even describe the microburst that we were under. And what was really special was that none of us moved. When you were up speaking at the microphone, no one moved. The cameras kept rolling. Nobody flinched. I remember hovering over you with the umbrella, making sure that you never got a single drip of rain on you so that you could deliver your message to our people. And I'll always cherish that moment that we spent together in Washington DC. And I just want to say mahalo for your service. And although it is not included in our bylaws, I hope to have the majority support of the board moving forward to bestow the title of Chair Emerita on trustee Lindsay to acknowledge her dedication and accomplishments to this board. The remainder of your term. At this time, the Chair asks for a motion to adjourn. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Justia Huna. Justia Kaka.
Aye, and I also wanted to note the congratulations to our new board chair, our new board Vice Chair. Kalomai, I wanted to change my vote to you, but things move so quickly. And to our new BAE Chair, Galutaria, as well as our new Budget and Finance Chair, Alapa. And our new Chair, Keoni for the Land Investments, and Vice Chair, John Lee. I look forward to working with everyone. Mahalo, mahalo.
Justie Akina.
Aye.
Justie Alapa.
I would also like to say something for everyone. It has been an incredible several weeks meeting with all of my fellow trustees. I've spent hours upon hours getting to know them more than I've ever had in the four years I served. And it's amazing to see the type of leadership they all possess. Every one of us possesses that. And the ideals that we shared, we have a lot I can say we have in common. And it's like, gosh, I can't wait for all of us to meet at the table to be able to share our goals, ideals, the love that we have for what we're doing. It's for our people first and foremost, but also to take on a new direction, a way in which all of us, and that's the entire OHA, our agency, we move forward together as one. And Stacy, I can't wait to work with you and everyone because there's so much I want to share, and I know everyone can contribute their mana'o. Because it's all about improving the agency as we move forward in '25 to have a plan of action. That action is one in which we will guide us to the goals that we must meet for our people, the tangible results that I'm so adamant about, that must happen sooner. As our people will know that we are taking their heartfelt concerns into consideration and that we are implementing them as soon as we can. As a whole, for all of our trustees, I thank you so much for giving me your mana'o. And we talked, I mean, many hours, even till 1:00 in the morning, we've had those conversations. And I know it's a lot of pressure because I've been in a position of having to choose. And I love each and every one of you, especially you, Hulu. But I had to follow my heart. And if I know that what I've done, it was always going to be for all of us in a most positive manner that we can move forward together as one, one team, one Ohana, all of us for 2025 and beyond. There are many things that are going to happen for us. I'm very excited, and I want to share all of that. And I think all of us want to bring that to the table, our excitement of change. Many things we have to go over with our bylaws, our policies, and so much more. And I welcome everyone. And again, a big mahalo to Hulu. You have done an incredible job, and yes, a lot of it you had to do on your own. And but we're going to stand by you all throughout, all of us will. And this goes to show the type of leadership that each of us possesses. And I know in my heart that we're going to do amazing in 2025. Congratulations to our new Chair, Kai Kaheli. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to me to share with you my ideals, my POA or Plan of Action, and a lot that we can pull together to behalf of master plan, set us up for success in 2025. Mahalo, everyone.
Justie Galutaria.
Mr. Chair, I'd like the words of the previous speaker to be entered into the record as if they were my own.
Aye, so ordered.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Chair Lindsay.
Aye.
Trustee Souza.
Aye, and if I may have a quick moment, congratulations, Chair Kaheli. Mahalo, Madame Chair Hulu for your service and everything that you've done. You know, we asked for change, a different approach, in a sense, yeah. And I supported it because I know this is going to be the change that we need. But at the end of the day, nothing really changes, right? We're all trustees. We all continue to do the same thing, do right by our beneficiaries and do the most we can to support them. And so I can, I'll continue to work with each and every one of you, no matter what role we hold, right? No matter what title, we're all trustees, looking forward to quality conversations in this boardroom. And so mahalo, thank you.
Trustee Wahee.
Yes.
And Chair Kaheli. You have nine ayes. We are adjourned.
Before we adjourn, I just want to wish